...and a town manager. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council for May the 7th, 2019. To open our meeting tonight, I'd like to invite Pastor Brian Finley. Pastor Brian Finley is from Hope Chapel Church in Apex. Yes, right there, it'd be great.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the opportunity that we have to gather here, and we recognize that among us is your presence. And Lord, first and foremost, I just bless every person that is here. God, I pray that the love that you hold in your heart for every individual would be felt in this room, that every person in this room would know about your powerful, unconditional love for them personally, for their families, and Lord, above all, for our community and especially for our nation. So, Lord, we welcome the council of heaven. We welcome the wisdom of heaven. And we thank you, Lord, that tonight we all get to participate in a partnership with the Kingdom of God. And we thank you, Lord, and in that partnership, that the things that are true in heaven, we get to see them be a reality here on earth. So, Lord, we thank you for your justice, for your truth, for your love, for your grace. Lord, for the mutual honor and affection and celebration that is shared with those who are in heaven. Lord, we pray in fulfillment of the Lord's prayer, that your kingdom would come, and your will, just like that, would be done in our midst. Lord, we recognize that when you walked the earth, you were always an advocate for the oppressed, whether it was religious, political, or spiritual oppression. You came to liberate the oppressed. But, Lord, you also came to liberate the oppressors. So, Lord, we welcome the spirit of freedom, the spirit of liberation into our midst, and may that guide our thoughts, may that guide our decisions here tonight. So, we welcome you, Lord. We bless you. What an honor it is we get to partner with you tonight. It's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here. I see a large group. That's great to see so many people interested in their local government. I wanted to make sure of two things. One is you got a chance to get a copy of the agenda that's out on the podium. So, if you missed it, feel free to step out and grab one. There's no penalty for getting up in the middle and just going to get it. Secondly, if you intend to speak during either a public hearing or the public forum, there are two things related that you need to know about. One is there is a guideline sheet. This was also on the podium. So, if you intend to speak, you need to familiarize yourself with these guidelines before your time comes up. Second is, if you intend to speak, you need to have your name on the sheets, the appropriate sheet, depending on whether it's the public hearing or the public forum. If you have not put your name there but you intend to speak tonight, please go sign your name right now, as the town clerk will be picking those up very shortly and bringing them to me. With that, we now move into the time of presentations. So, I'll begin with presentation number one for National Police Week. And as I sign this, I will also now read this. And then I will present it to the chief. National Police Week 2019, whereas Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th, 2019, as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as National Police Week. And whereas, there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Apex Police Department, represented tonight on the back row. Whereas, the members of our law enforcement agency of Apex play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of our town. And whereas, it is important for all citizens to know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the law enforcement agency, and that members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 31st Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2019. Now therefore, I Lance Olive, Mayor of the Town of Apex, North Carolina, call upon our citizens and all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 12th through 18th, 2019 as National Police Week, recognizing all law enforcement officers, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to the responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. I further call upon all citizens to observe May 15th, 2019 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, to honor our law enforcement officers who have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have been disabled in the performance of their duties. And let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. And I've signed this today. Is the chief here to receive this? So, with this, I'd like to present this to the chief on behalf of the entire Apex Police Department. Thank you, sir. Maybe you can say a couple of words?
Sure, thank you. This is a representative sample of your protectors of the peak. They're here 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Great days where we have festivals in town. Twenty-some odd thousand people that are enjoying our town, the peak of good living. They're here in the middle of night. They're here during hurricanes. They're here when you need them the most. I'm very proud of this team and those behind them that they represent, and the many other men and women sworn civilian, full-time, part-time, Apex Police Department. And this is the week where we honor them. We give out our awards, and we strive to never forget those police officers across this nation who have given their lives in service of their communities. It can happen anywhere. It can happen in an incident. And we were, just as you know, suffered a loss here in North Carolina just a couple of days ago, where an officer for the Mooresville Police Department was shot and killed during a traffic stop. And that's what these mourning bands represent. And they're authorized by our staff to wear for any line of duty death in North Carolina, and we'll also be wearing them next week in support of National Police Week in the over 21,000 names that are on the Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington. So, thank you for your support, Mayor, Council, and our great community. And please call up if you need to do this. That's over here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and staff. Next, I'd like to do a proclamation. This is a Public Service Recognition Week 2019. Whereas, the President of the United States has designated May 5th through 11th, 2019 as Public Service Recognition Week. And whereas, there are approximately 22 million persons employed by federal, state, and local governments, serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Town of Apex. And whereas, Public Service Recognition Week has been celebrated the first week of May since 1985, beginning on the first Sunday of the month, to honor the men and women who serve our nation as federal, state, county, and local government employees. Now therefore, I Lance Olive, Mayor of the Town of Apex, North Carolina, call upon our citizens and all patriotic, civic, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 5th through 11th, 2019 as Public Service Recognition Week, recognizing all public servants, past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their communities. And I've signed this here. Mr. Town Manager, who is going to receive this?
Our Human Resources Director, Mary Beth Mandel.
All right. Mary Beth? There she is. All right, very good. I'll come down there.
Thank you very much.
I will just say, I didn't bring all 450-plus of our employees to show you, but we really do have a great staff here at Apex. And I do want to thank the mayor and council, our town administration, and all of the community for all of the support. We have a great team, and we hope that you see that every day in the services that they provide. So, thank you.
We have one more here. Building Safety Month. Whereas, the Town of Apex continues efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, water conservation, and resilience in the built environment that affects our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of natural disaster, giving us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas, our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, these guardians, dedicated members of the International Code Council, use a governmental consensus process that brings together local, state, and federal officials with expertise in the built environment to create and implement the highest-quality codes to protect Americans in the buildings where we live, learn, work, worship, play. And whereas, the international codes, the most widely adopted, building safety, energy, and fire prevention codes in the nation, are used by most US cities, counties, and states. These modern building codes also include safeguards to protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown guardians of the public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas, building codes driving growth through innovation, resilience, and safety is the theme for Building Safety Month 2019. This encourages all Americans to raise awareness of their importance of building safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, water safety and conservation, energy efficiency, and new technologies in the construction industry. Building Safety Month 2019 encourages appropriate steps everyone can take to ensure that the places where we live, learn, work, worship, and play are safe and sustainable, and recognizes that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas, each year, in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge that the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I Mayor Lance Olive, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2019 as Building Safety Month in the Town of Apex. Accordingly, I encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities. Mr. Town Manager, who plans to come for this?
Our Director of Permits and Inspections, Rudy Baker.
All right. Come forward, Rudy.
They know I don't talk, but anyway. I just want to thank the council, mayor, and all our staff to support us doing our jobs every day. And we are having, combined with Home Depot on Saturday, to have staff members there. If y'all have any questions, or anybody knows anybody got any questions, come visit us, and we'll inform you anything you need to know about building permits. And if you got any questions about building permits, residential or commercial, give us a call, and we'll help you out.
All right, now forth on our agenda, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mayor Protem Nicole Dozier, who will discuss the Think Apex Awards.
So, if the council will join me up front, we are going to start the award ceremony. All right, so I'll start the program, and whenever you come up to get your award, when I get to that, make sure that you slow down, and make sure you shake everyone's hand, and then we'll get a photo. All right. So, good evening and welcome to the 2019 Think Apex Award Ceremony. Think Apex was created in 2014 as initiative to encourage a local mindset. And my vision was for all the Apex community, including businesses and residents and visitors, to not just buy locally, but to think locally, in a variety of aspects, including entertainment and recreation. The Think Apex Awards, though, recognizes local businesses, individuals, and nonprofit organizations for their dedicated service to others and to the Apex community as a whole. Nominations were received through a public online application process, and winners were selected by a group of previous Think Apex Award recipients. So, at this time, I'd like to recognize all of this year's nominees. And when I call your name or your organization, if you could stand and remain standing until all the names have been called. And I know everyone's happy to be here to support fellow Apexers, but if you could hold your applause, please, until all names are announced. So, the nominees for the individual or group category are: Asif Ansari, Barbara Cross, Diana Hasagawa Brown, Doris Battle, Rick Gardner, Robert Kadran, Shane Reese, Stacy Kivitt. All right, so the nominees for the business category are Louis De Elia, Neighbor Boy Incorporated, and The Rusty Bucket. And then finally, the nominees for the nonprofit category are Apex Sunrise Rotary Foundation, Peak Lab Rescue, and The Prom Shop. So, now we can all give these deserving Apexers a round of applause. So, we all can be seated, and we'll get started. So, now I'm going to start with the Top Thinker and Honorable Mention for each category. For the individual or group category, this individual is known for his or her dedication to young women in Apex. This individual works throughout the year to organize an event, thank you, that impacts those in our community and throughout the state. An individual whose creative idea helps young women feel beautiful and special, no matter their financial situation, by providing a free prom shop at a local church, the Honorable Mention Award in the individual category goes to Stacy Kivitt. It's been a while, it's been a year.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Make sure I got the right name, though. All right, the Top Thinker in this category is known for being a longtime volunteer in the Apex community. This individual works tirelessly each year to provide an exceptional experience to everyone that attends Apex's largest festival. An individual that demonstrates dedication to Apex by securing quality entertainment for Peak Fest through countless hours of negotiations and communication, the Top Thinker Award in the individual category goes to Rick Gardner. So, now for the business category. This business is known for creating fun family experiences. This business provides outstanding customer service by creating a safe location in Apex where families can establish holiday traditions together. A business that puts family moments at the forefront of their operation, the Honorable Mention in the business category goes to Neighbor Boy. The Top Thinker in this category is a business known for bringing together local business owners to enrich and preserve one of Apex's most significant features, our central business district. A business that sees the importance of downtown Apex and works to enhance it through entertainment and events, the Top Thinker Award in the business category goes to The Rusty Bucket. Make sure my eyes are open. We're not telling. So, for the nonprofit category, this nonprofit organization is known for connecting families with an animal in need of love and stability. This organization is the largest foster-based rescue of its breed in North Carolina, an organization that changes the lives of animals and families through rescue and has saved 1,200 dogs in 2018 alone. The Honorable Mention in the nonprofit category is Peak Lab Rescue. All right, so the Top Thinker in this category is a nonprofit organization known for their creation of one of the newest signature events in downtown Apex. With each annual event, this organization raises money for local charities, an organization known for showcasing Apex nationwide, and giving back to local organizations through the creation of Peak City Peak Fest. The Top Thinker in the nonprofit category is Apex Sunrise Rotary Foundation. All right, so on behalf of the Think Apex team and the Town of Apex, and my colleagues on the council administration, also, I want to thank you all for coming out tonight. Congratulations again to all the nominees and the winners. To the nominees and winners, I want you to know that your stories are inspirational to me and to everyone here tonight and to this town. Your community service is admirable, and your impact makes a difference and is worthy of recognition. So, in closing, my hope is that by being here tonight, and with all this going on around us, that you feel encouraged, that all of us who can, can work to continue to foster, you know, a sense of local community and mindset, and support and invest in a local and unique aspects of this town. And I hope that we continue to do so and able to join this town and also support each other as we can. So, thank you for coming out, and you don't have to leave. You can join us for the council meeting, but if you do need to leave, we understand. Oh, group photo.
Everybody?
Yes.
All, everybody?
Everybody. So, that's why I said you could go. I forget, how do you want us here? And do you want us?
Nominees?
Just start doing it over here, please?
Just push it back, and then stand, yeah, just stand up to the table. Just stand right here.
Do your shoulders out, so this side, do this shoulder out. Yup, is there any other nominees we're missing?
So, we're looking at Karen first.
Karen's the official.
Mm-hmm, in the middle.
Keep smiling.
And then we will do Top Thinkers and Honorable Mentions, and everyone else can go ahead and take a seat. The Top Thinker and Honorable Mention for all categories.
Stay.
Stay up here.
Stay. Thank you.
And so, you guys can come over and just do one line now. Yeah, just come on down. Yes, please. Yes. And then, yeah, just step back. Oh, no, just either way. Can you just all take a step? Two steps that way, this line, yeah.
Look.
You want your boxes?
The secret, the secret of what's for me here?
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Can you change the slide?
All right, as everyone is filing out, thank you very much, Mayor Protem Dozier.
Thank you, thank you.
We now continue on with our regular meeting. This is the time of consent agenda, where we typically look at things as one single motion. If there is something controversial, we'll often pull it and discuss it later. But typically, the consent agenda are non-controversial items. With that, I'll ask the council if there is an item to be pulled or if there is a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to pull Consent 09. If I can.
All right. If it's not objection to anyone, I'll create that one as new business number five. We'll see. New business number five? All right, I don't hear an objection, so we'll do that. And I believe there was a consent agenda. All opposed say no. All right, we've approved the consent. This is now the time where we go to page four on our agenda, right in the middle where we set our agenda for the night. I do have one request for council and you can consider it a favor if you like, but my request is for new business number four, that we handle that one before new business number one. The rationale for that is simply nothing more than a personal reason. Just in brief, I've been visiting my parents every day for the last six weeks just for their health reasons and I believe it would be very beneficial if I were to be able to get to their home before they turn in for the night. The doctor has already even confirmed that that helps. So if it's not objectionable to the council, I may choose to depart as quickly as I can and if we can do that one item since it's near and dear to my heart, I would like for us to do that one before number one, before new business one. Thank you very much. With that said, are there any other items that anyone needs to adjust or is there a motion?
Make a motion. Will we approve?
With that change.
With the change, yeah.
All right, discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, thank you very much. We now have set the agenda for the night. We now move to public forum, so at this time, as the town clerk brings me the sheet, if you know you signed up for public forum speaking, feel free to start making your way up towards the front because you will have an opportunity to speak as I call your name from the sheet. Again, using the guidelines here, individuals have three minutes and if they're speaking for a group, they can speak for nine. I see three names on here, so I'll call them in the order that they appear. Number one is Daniel, wait, give me a chance. Cottaparrest. Is that close?
Very close.
All right, well, I'll let you correct me when you give us your name and address, sir.
My name is Daniel Cottaparrest. I reside at 121 Ada Street in Apex and I'm a relatively new resident of Apex as of last year. Love it. Moved here with my fiancee and today I'll be speaking on behalf of my immediate neighbors at 117 Ada Street, Edmund Lauren Henderson, 121 Ada Street, myself and Catherine Porter, 125 Ada Street, R.C.L. Reckman and Daryl Mallett, 201 Ada Street, Kristin Patrick Glazer and 205 Ada Street, Jody and Teresa Atkins. I am here, I'm here to urge approval of the first item of new business today that will be presented by Russell Dalton, Senior Transportation Engineer of the Town of Apex. This is the proposal for a roundabout at South Salem Street and Lynch and Tingen Streets as well as the extension of Lynch Street to the Peakway. Myself and my neighbors, which I mentioned previously, live within one block of Lynch Street and the proposed roundabout. I can see Lynch Street from the front windows of my house and South Salem Street from the rear of my house. We will be affected by this project and are in support of it. The Lynch Street extension will provide added connectivity, making it safer for residents of our neighborhood to head west past Apex JC Park. Currently, it is difficult during peak traffic times to make a left turn on Upchurch Street onto NC 55 West. This will become increasingly difficult when the NC 55 widening project happens when it increases to four-ish lanes. The NC 55 project will see that both Harwood Street and First Streets are closed. At the completion, without Lynch, without the Lynch Street extension, residents will only have the alternatives to potentially head east towards South Salem Street by means of West Street and Lynch Streets. Residents will then have to travel north and then take a left onto NC 55 at an intersection that's already fairly congested at times. There's also the added benefit that by extending Lynch Street, it'll provide for increased connectivity of to the Beaver Creek Greenway and Apex JC Park when you head north on the Apex Peakway without putting pedestrians at risk on NC 55 and in between Upchurch and JC Park, there's not really any good sidewalk connectivity currently. The proposed roundabout at South Salem Street and Lynch and Tingen Streets will help keep traffic moving that currently backs up during peak commute hours as well as slow traffic for those of us that are attempting to turn to go home on Salem, onto Lynch Street and it's often difficult to seat over the crest of the hill on Salem when you're coming north on Salem from 540. Sometimes we feel like we're going to get rear-ended, so it'll help a little bit there by slowing traffic down. It also has the potential for adding a nice entrance to downtown Apex coming from that direction as opposed to a traffic signal. Roundabout gives there a more of a small-town vibe that can be enhanced with art, paintings or plantings and welcoming signage. Long after the NC 55 widening project happens, the Apex Peakway extension and Tingen's road closure, this will serve as a good focal point when you're coming in from the south side of downtown.
Daniel, let me interrupt you for one second. A, do you have much more because your three minutes ran out? B, are some of your neighbors here?
That's it.
Oh, you're good. Okay, very good. All right, very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Laura Holly.
Hello. My name is Laura Holly. I live at 925 Branch Line Lane. I'm a volunteer member of the Apex Public Art Committee, but tonight I'm speaking as an individual proponent of public art and I'd like to start by saying thank you for the support that you have given for public art already. Public art is an interactive art. Traditionally, public art was about putting out a mural, a sculpture, a painting, and that was great because visually it does add to a community. But I'm learning that contemporary thought about public art is so much more expansive than that. Public art is an act, is an art that actively invites the public to interact with it, to develop it, touch it, photograph it, use it, discuss it, post about it, art maps and art apps. The Apex Public Art Committee's four-foot-by-eight-foot Paint by Numbers Community Art Project at Peakfest is a fine example of this. Public art is subjective and consensus is rare. Many pieces of art that are now widely accepted and beloved, the Eiffel Tower, the Louvre's Pyramid, Chicago's Bean, the Vietnam Wall, were birthed under great controversy. Here at home, the proposed sculpture is an example of this, but the same could be said of the plot of land in downtown Apex with the painted rocks, the little free library, the flags. Some people look at that and find it sweet and charming. Other people look upon it with distaste, finding it hokey and unattractive. Some people want public art to reflect Apex's history. Others are more excited about seeing the future. Public art is often neither straightforward nor easy, but this alone should not be sufficient cause for alarm. Public art is inherently a societal good. Disapprobation notwithstanding, public art promotes community. It combats complacency, stagnation, isolation, desolation. It gifts us, the people, with aesthetic appreciation, creative innovation, substantive conversations, community vibrancy, economic excitement, innermost passion and human compassion. Even some of the pieces that I have found aesthetically repugnant have challenged me in big and small ways to become a better human being. And I'm not alone. Art has the power to impact us all in this way. Art intrinsically carries the capacity to affect the most fundamental and the most aspirational facets of our individual and collective humanity. A key is to allow for public input, which the committee is working towards and has just received a Peakfest community grant so that we can connect with the wider community both in person and online. Whatever your decision tonight regarding this sculpture, I ask you to please continue supporting public art development in Apex. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. And Nicole Bernard. And as she's coming up, let me just ask, so you've circled that you represent four or more people that are present. Are they here? Can they identify themselves?
That is correct.
All right. Okay, great.
Also, Agent Wall will be speaking briefly.
Agent Wall, okay, that's fine. You'll have nine minutes together. Thank you.
Mayor, Council and Town Administration, my name is Nicole Bernard and I am the Director of Shield North Carolina. I will be presenting on new business item number four, a resolution that the Town of Apex will include a provision in all contracts that the Town of Apex executes that contractors, subcontractors and vendors will not engage in human trafficking or involuntary servitude, including the acquisition of labor by means of deception, coercion, intimidation or force. In other words, this resolution will make it known to anyone who wishes to do business with the town that it is Apex's insistence that we do not support the practice of forced labor. This is a policy that defines our identity as a town. This resolution came about after Mayor Olive and Agent Wall attended a conference hosted by the City of Houston, the mayor's office. I joined the anti-trafficking movement because trafficking exists. We need no other reason to take a stand against the practice of selling other humans for sex and labor, a practice for which our state is in the top 10 of the nation. I first attended a town council meeting two years ago after another mother and I approached Mayor Olive with a question of what can be done to combat trafficking in the peak of good living. Following that meeting, Mayor Olive and the council issued a proclamation with the insistence that the proclamation result in real action. Three mothers and I helped put together a week in awareness on human trafficking. It forced me to investigate the response of our town and identify gaps, needs and our strengths. Since then, I formed Shield North Carolina and began hosting a podcast with a mayor that is now hosted across North America. I hope that the council will continue to insist that proclamations be more than just words on paper. Since our first proclamation, Mayor Olive and I have advocated and collaborated with North Carolina Representative Bill Brawley to put together one of the most comprehensive bills that's became law last session for human trafficking. We have trained numerous groups in the community on how to identify and appropriately respond to trafficking situations and prevent. We have offered ongoing social media awareness. We have mentored Garner on how to help create a municipal awareness week. We are currently partnering with the SBI for Demand Reduction Initiative. We have advocated for Apex to require all town employees to be trained on human trafficking identification. We recently partnered with Apex PD to create a coalition of faith leaders and service providers to be monthly for education on human trafficking related issues and ways to combat them. This group was originally helped form by Mayor Lance Olive. Shield's Lauren Thomas here today has led outreach to Apex trucking companies to include human trafficking training and has advocated at the state level for all new CDL licensers to receive this training. Two weeks ago, we brought together key stakeholders in Apex to start a restoration home for trafficking victims that we hope can help support our regional rapid response team lead project fight also here tonight. Thanks to connections through Mayor Olive and my podcast, we were able to meet with an assistant on domestic policy to the President of the United States. I attended a meeting with him at the Eisenhower Building last month. We discussed an executive order for more federal resources to be allocated to combat internet crimes against children based on knowledge that I learned working at the community level. Tomorrow morning, I leave for DC to meet with the third from the top, the Department of Justice, Stephen Cox, and four legislators' representatives on introducing legislation that will finally grant child pornography victims more adequate restitution. Shield brought training from New York to respond to Asian Eagle massage businesses and we invited key stakeholders, service providers and law enforcement around the Triangle Region. We met here in Apex and that response has now been integrated into their response in North Carolina. I've had the pleasure and honor to advocate with the SBI and the General Assembly, with General Assembly members to be empowered to increase the SBI's response because they were granted original jurisdiction in July of 2017. Nikki Miller, a Shield member here today, met with key leaders just this morning at the administration of the courts to help them form a strategy for educating judges on appropriate victim response. And we now have a Shield North Carolina member serving on the North Carolina Human Trafficking Commission as the Public Health Chair for which Shield offers support. Walt Disney once said, "I hope we never lose sight that it all started with a mouse." We have been influential at the state level and have made it to the White House in just 18 months. I hope that we never lose sight of the fact that it all started with a proclamation here in Apex. Apex is helping create a prototype for grassroots municipal response to completely shield a community from human trafficking. As the peak, we have the vantage point to see beyond and I challenge us all to see a state that does not tolerate humans to be sold. It is truly the municipal level that must lead the nation and the work we are doing in Apex can be expected to have a ripple effect across the nation. Vote yes to the resolution tonight. It draws a line in the sand and reclaims that as a town, we do not tolerate labor trafficking. Nancy Hagan here tonight, a labor trafficking expert from Project No Rest at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill, will tell you that there is so much more work to be done in Apex in this area and it is time to get started. I'd like to introduce my colleague, Agent Carl Wall from the SBI. Agent Wall and Mayor Olive attended a conference at the, from the mayor's office at Houston to better identify practices for best response to human trafficking and I'd like to introduce him to speak now.
Thank you, Nicole. As she said, my name is Carl Wall. I'm the special agent in charge with the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation. Just last year, in July, we formed a human trafficking unit in which I am the supervisor of. It's been my pleasure to partner with NC Shield in Apex Town and the Police Department with Chief Letney in moving this forward. Bringing a light to human trafficking is what we're trying to do at this point and determine some resolutions. Apex is going to be on the cusp of something that only few, really one city in the nation that has ever done in creating this proclamation. Houston, as Nicole mentioned, the mayor and myself went down and met with them, had a two-day conference and learned a lot of strategies and this was one, this was the first one that Mayor Olive wanted to put into effect. So I applaud you for coming back and doing this work and I hope that your council members see fit to push it forward. Human trafficking is not isolated to large cities. We would look at it as a state model to see, yes, Charlotte has an issue and Raleigh has an issue, but every one of those cities branches out into a small community just as Apex. And it's my honor that Apex is willing to step forward and be that model for the state of North Carolina in which other towns and cities will hopefully come behind and see what works in trying to stop this. As Nicole has mentioned and is always on the news, we see the sex trafficking and we see the trade and the sale of humans, but what we don't see is the labor trafficking and it's everywhere, including Apex. And it's probably closer than you want to realize, but it's all around the state of North Carolina. And to introduce a resolution like this will put a stop to what is going on in every city in the state of North Carolina. So it's been my honor to, for Nicole to ask me to come here. We're going around every city, every state, every town in this state, trying to get the message out that human trafficking is an issue. It's a town issue, it's a city issue and it's a state issue. I applaud the chief for allowing us to come in and kind of use Apex as a testing ground, but it will put you far further down the road in preventing this terrible issue.
All right, thank you, special agent. And before you step away, I'd like for you to come in and just put your address here.
Okay.
You still have a little bit of green light time. Do you have anything else you want to add?
I would just like to ask if any of my colleagues would like to stand up and introduce themselves or if I would like to ask them to stand up. This is Nancy Hagan from Project No Rest at University of North Carolina. She has led an incredible response for labor trafficking across the state. We also have Elizabeth Hunter who works at Project Fight. She does outreach directly to victims. She's on the front lines every day. She has an incredibly difficult job and she, Project Fight leads the regional rapid response team for our region. We also have Lauren Thomas. She has been leading outreach to the trucking companies. My friend and colleague Nikki Miller, who met, who is really, has a heart and a passion for combating trafficking in the correction system. And also my pastor, Brian Finley, who gave the invocation this evening, who has been tremendous support.
Thank you.
So there are a lot more people here fighting, fighting in the trenches and I just wanted to thank you so much for voting yes tonight for the resolution.
All right, thank you, Ms. Bernard.
You still have a little bit of green light time. Do you have anything else you want to add?
I would just like to ask if any of my colleagues would like to stand up and introduce themselves, or if I would like to ask them to stand up. This is Nancy Hagan from Project No Rest at University of North Carolina. She has led an incredible response for labor trafficking across the state. We also have Elizabeth Hunter, who works at Project Fight. She does outreach directly to victims. She's on the front lines every day. She has an incredibly difficult job. And she, Project Fight leads the Regional Rapid Response Team for our region. We also have Lauren Thomas. She has been leading outreach to the trucking companies. My friend and colleague Nikki Miller, who is really, has a heart and a passion for combating trafficking in the correction system, and also my pastor, Brian Finley, who gave the invocation this evening, who has been tremendous support.
Thank you.
So there are a lot more people here fighting in the trenches, and I just wanted to thank you so much for voting yes tonight for the resolution.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Bernard. And that concludes our public forum tonight.
Mayor, can I, J.C. Knowles wrote us all an email. He asked that I read it into the record tonight. Is that?
We don't typically do that sort of thing. It can set a precedent, but...
How do you suggest?
What's the topic? Did he want to offer a topic into public forum?
He did, and he couldn't make it because of his wife's health. He emailed all council tonight.
Okay. Sorry, I haven't had a chance to say that.
Anyhow, he just asked that I read it into the records.
Is there any objection from council? Okay. Is it brief enough?
It is. It's really short.
All right, go free.
So J.C. Knowles said, "Because of my wife's health issues, I'll not be able to attend the council meeting this evening. Please permit me to say a few words concerning the council's action on the artwork for our historic downtown." He made five points here. Point number one, I am not against artwork that the council approved. The type of art that it represents is outstanding. I do not know the artist, so I cannot speak to this other than say, I wish it had been a local artist. Point number two, the work of art that was approved, in my opinion, does not represent the value and character of our historic downtown and misrepresents a work of art that complements the most historical building in the whole of Apex. Point number three, please let me recommend to the council, reverse your action concerning the placement of this specific work of art in our historic downtown. Instruct the Art Commission to continue their promotion and seek out more artists to submit works for our historic downtown. Point number four, as your ambassador, please give me the opportunity to help you and the commission in any way that I can to keep the community informed of this important undertaking. And point number five, think Apex.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. All right, with that, I'll close the public forum with just a final comment. It is not part of our normal standard procedure, and I don't recommend necessarily setting a precedent of having people send emails and then read them into the records because that can, well, you can imagine where that can go if taken to a logical conclusion. I think for Mr. J.C. Knowles, I think we all understand as the ambassador of Apex, and also given his condition, I think an exception is reasonable. But I just wanted to kind of say that. I don't want anyone to get the feel that we'll begin starting to read every email into record at some point.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. At this time, now, we move to public hearings. Public hearing number one, this is receiving input on our budget, and we have Assistant Town Manager Sean Purvis.
Mayor, Town Council, good evening. I'll be brief tonight. As we've been, you've had a workshop on this. You've had this budget draft for a couple of weeks. I just want to hit some highlights and then, of course, open it up to the public for their comments as we move forward. So real quick, you see the overview in front of you. We're looking at about $144 million in total of all our operating funds and special funds, and there's almost 13.9, 13.8 million in terms of capital projects that are continuing on or will have other funds coming in. The overall, we're only looking at a little under 1% increase on our overall budget compared to the amended budget of the current fiscal year, 1819. Moving on to the general fund, 65.1. One thing I do want to point out on the general fund is you see the decrease of 0.14%. A little misrepresented, just by the numbers, in that it was a $3.5 million carryover from purchase orders from last year that did not get expended until coming into this year. So that bumps the amended budget up a little bit. If you would count for that $3.5 million, the general fund budget is actually up about 5.5% over last year's budget. You can see that the tax rate is kept flat at 41.5 cents per council's request. The vehicle tag fee does increase to 25, which is our maximum that we can go at this point. And we do have some slight increases on solid waste. You can see the dollar amount there, the penny amount, but it's a, the 21 cents of garbage is 2.5% that coincides with inflation in our contract. And then the recycle is 84 cents, which is actually the 2.5% plus an additional 75 cents because of the markets dealing with recycling currently. Let's see. Debt service at 4.5. Electric fund, up about almost 7%. Low debt service, as you can see, that's like less than 1.5% of expenditures. And then a 1.65% rate increase, this is less than last year's by almost a percentage point, and about $2 a month on average for the average customer. And water and sewer fund, 23.5 million. This is up 0.64%, so not up much over the current year. Debt service, about $4 million. No change in water rates recommended. 4% increase in our sewer model, which was year three of a study that had been done a few years ago that recommended increasing the sewer. We will be reviewing that study in the coming year, expected to be changed, moved forward for both water and sewer. The average customer cost for this sewer increase is about $1.66 a month, $1.66. If you add all that up, it's $4.70 a month, electric sewer and the garbage recycling increase. And that's all I've got to say unless you have any question. I'll put it back on the overview. Unless you have any questions for me specifically, otherwise we'll turn it over to the public.
All right.
I appreciate the short and sweet graphics for all these.
J.C. Galloway makes everybody look good.
Yeah, that's great.
Let's process real quick. So we have a public hearing tonight, and then, I know we had a couple outstanding issues at the workshop, so we'll see some kind of final version. There'll be a vote on that at some point. Is that the only other thing?
So a public hearing tonight makes sure we receive public comment. I do want to point out, we've had one initial public hearing beforehand. That was to kind of garner any kind of input as we moved into the budget season full throttle. And then we also have online, we do have methods for assistants to submit comments online. We receive those emails as well as I can always phone us, stop by any comment, any method they deem necessary.
And that email is still active?
Yes. Actually, that email is continually active. So we'll continue, we'll get those moved forward. Then whatever we receive tonight, we'll take into consideration, and then we balance that with what council asks us to do, directs us. There would be potentially one more workshop on May 16th, I believe is the date. I'll definitely double check that. It's definitely that week. If council chooses instead of be at that workshop, that council could give us final direction for anything that you hear this evening, anything else that you want to consider. We're not asking for adoption of the budget until the first June meeting, which I believe is June 4th, 5th, around that date.
Thanks.
All right. Shall we go to the public hearing? All right. Thank you, Mr. Purvis. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. And looking at the sheet, I see no one has signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for, I guess there's no vote required, is there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we just move along.
Sorry, one more question. Is there an end date for when the emails need to be in by to you guys for it to matter?
Just until you adopt it.
Okay, okay.
But the later, the more complicated on the schedule.
Yeah, that's right. It does make it a little bit easier not to keep going. Okay.
And the date is June 4th.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move along to old business. Old business number one. And Councilmember Killingsworth, you have the floor.
So after thinking about the vote last time and the piece of art, the more I looked into, the more I had problems with this piece of art in this particular place. And there's also two separate issues that I would like to talk about. One is specifically this decision for the public art in front of the depot. The other is addressing the public art policy itself. So, I mean, if we want to separate those out and talk about two different ones, that's fine. But I would like to reconsider the motion to approve the art and discuss further action from there.
So then she needs a second. Is that correct? That's the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion and the second to reconsider the motion? This is a reconsider vote.
Of the piece of art.
So what, so just to be clear, this is a motion to reconsider with a second. So by voting for it, we will now open the topic back up again, and we will require another vote to move forward. Okay? Discussion on the motion for reconsider?
I voted for the original one with some apprehensions in terms of it fitting, and certainly got a few emails telling me that I had made an error.
Okay.
And I will have to say I did, I think. I think that's a nice piece of art, but not that place.
All right. So let's have a vote on the reconsider, and then we'll get into the details.
I'm sorry.
That's right. So all in favor of reconsidering, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. That passes four to one. So we now... Did you, you voted?
I voted in favor.
All right. And so we're now reconsidering. With that, we now open it up. So if you'd like to reconsider the, or discuss and see if there's a new motion?
Sure. So my thought is, I do like this piece of art. I'm just, I think that it's not a good place for it. So I think if we could kick this back to the Public Art Committee to find a bit more appropriate place for this to go, you know, I'm thinking Hunter Street Park or Beaver Creek Commons, you know, some of the newer areas in Apex, it's more contemporary. I do think that we can find something a little bit different, a little bit more historical context to go in front of the depot. And I think public art is something that people should feel good about, that, you know, people are not angry about when they look at it, you know, if it doesn't fit with the context of the place. So that's my thoughts on it.
All right.
So for me, just sticking to this piece of your concerns, I do agree that that location may not be the right fit for that particular art. I understand that, you know, it's not just what I prefer because it is, you know, subjective. But, you know, I think that the Public Art Committee did a lot of work related to this. But I do feel like from hearing from folks that folks didn't feel as though they had enough time or opportunities to then provide public input outside of, you know, coming to the council and listening to presentations. So what I would like for us to suggest in our conversation here is, you know, we are already going to have public input related to a downtown plan. And so just wonder if the council would consider, you know, pushing this back to the committee and thinking about how the increased input could be folded into the downtown plan. That would be my solution in getting more input and more momentum about the public art.
Okay. So I've heard two of you said, let's ask the Public Art Committee to read, to look at this a little further. Is there any, is there a motion you want to make and then see if the council wants to send it to the Public Art Committee again?
I'll make a motion to approve this piece of art conditioned upon sending it back to the Public Art Committee and finding a different place for it and bringing it back to council for approval.
Is there's...
So I want to know if you're willing to add to your motion and ask them to consider the downtown plan as a venue or avenue for them to collect more input.
I would agree with that.
Okay. So just to be clear, we have a motion and a second to approve the artwork, but ask the Public Art Committee to find a better location and to consider the downtown plan in forward-looking art selections and locations and things. All right. And is there discussion on that motion?
So, go ahead.
Go ahead, Brett.
I was going to say, I've been thinking a lot about this, art, downtown Apex and art in Apex. First of all, I think this piece of art is supposed to, meant to be interactive, meant to be, you know, seen from the road and interacted with people walking by. And I can't think of a single other place besides in the downtown area like that, especially right in front of the depot, where that can happen. At Beaver Creek, there's nobody walking. Hunter Street, you know, the kids will probably hang on it. I'm not sure how, unless it's structurally very sound, I'm not sure. That concerns me a little bit, too, even though it's on our art walk map. You know, I think this is the, I think the idea of the interactive art just fits in that spot, although admittedly, it's pretty modern right in front of the old building. That one, that part, you know, I think that we can't keep our downtown the same sleepy, old-looking downtown. I think there's going to be, have to make it more vibrant, and I think art like this makes downtown more vibrant. And I think the downtown plan will provide other recommendations for that. But I think if you want to attract people who are younger, I think things like art that are interactive and it can be modern, I think, can be an attraction to the downtown area. Otherwise, it's going to keep being great, but not necessarily attracting people like my age, people, I think. Millennials and younger, I think, would be more inclined to go out. If you go out, certain times of the day, it's mostly people, not millennials, and they're working sometimes, or people with little kids. I mean, it's not people my age, really, that you see out and about as very much. And I think that art is one way we can attract them. And so, you know, there's, like the one speaker said, we have art in front of older buildings than the depot building by a long shot that is modern-looking. And, you know, I was looking at Google Maps today about this. This thing is right by the road. It's not right in front of the building. It's not, it won't be representing the building because it's, you know, it's closer to the road than is the building, and there's cars, a parking lot in between those two things. So I think the association of the depot building with this, I think this will be associated with the downtown area, not just this depot building. And so that's, I was, you know, I think this spot is a great spot for something like this kind of art. And if we move it somewhere else, it's going to be, I think it's a cool piece of art, and I like, and I hope we, you know, put it up somewhere. That's great, but I just don't think we'll get the walking by interactiveness that we're going to have at this spot. And it's going to be less, there's going to be a lot less utility. Maybe it's safer, but there's also a lot less utility in a different spot, like we've mentioned. So that's my thoughts.
All right.
Well, I'll chime in. I mean, it's no secret where I stand on spending public dollars on public art. I was the only one three weeks ago that, I guess, put the thought and energy in before that vote and made that decision to vote against it. And it took a Facebook post and a lot of interaction from people knowing about this for this council to change their decision. I was disappointed three weeks ago of the decision that was made. I'm very happy tonight that we're reconsidering it. And I still don't like the piece of art, but again, art is subjective, so I get that. But some of us grew up in Apex. We all live in Apex. Some of us grew up here. Some of us moved here from other areas because we all love something about this town. And we all talk about historic downtown Apex. And in the next sentence, we're talking about putting a piece of modern art to downtown historic Apex. It makes absolutely no sense to me. The, where we're going to put it is right in the middle of what used to be called Log Pond. We've heard J.C. talk about it. It's in the book, Pluck, Paint, and Perseverance. I mean, we know the history of our town. J.C. has some amazing art ideas, and I encouraged the Art Council to talk to J.C. Knowles and see what kind of ideas and other perspective he can bring to the table on this. But I'm glad that we are reconsidering this. I do not like this piece of art in that location. I'm not sure I know anywhere that it would fit around town. I'm sure that the committee will recommend a good place, but think Apex Month. And we just made a declaration in the beginning of this meeting about think Apex. If we get two submissions from nobody in Apex, it might be time to hit the pause button and say, let's go back out and search for some Apex artists and not be in such a hurry to get public art in places without local submissions. So I would encourage the committee to think local with this. We have over 50,000 people that live here that we can surely find a piece of art that is from a local artist somewhere.
So I would want to, can I, if I could, correct you for a minute? You made an assumption that it was your Facebook post that got this back here today? That's not an assumption for me. For me, it was people contacting me, not social media. And for me, the biggest thing was making sure that people felt like they had been contacted, that they had, you know, opportunity to provide input, and I didn't see that that happened the way I think it should have. So that was my not related to pressure from social media posts.
All right.
Well, I do like the piece of art, frankly, but I, and I agree with J.C. Knowles that it doesn't fit. That's all. So I would be in favor of doing exactly what Nicole suggested in terms of moving this down and getting the downtown plan together. And they can discuss that at that time. And then places, I mean, I can see it out in the quad out here, this piece of art. Then all of us can go off and buy it every two weeks. But I would be in favor of putting this, basically kind of kicking it down the road a little bit. but, uh, I, I would be in favor of putting this, basically kinda kicking it down the road a little bit, but give, give it, give the Art Committee an opportunity to expand and look at this. One problem I did have when it came up in front of us is there was only two proposals. And I'm sure they went local, frankly, to see if they could find somebody that's local that was gonna do it, but nothing happened. So sometimes when you get just two proposals, maybe you need to step back and see if you can get some more. But I, I will say, I think it's a very nice piece of modern art, you know, you know.
Well, I'll weigh in before we vote, if you don't mind. I'll, um, and I appreciate everybody covering while I was unable to be here, uh, April 16th. But with that said, now that it's up for reconsideration, it gives me kind of a, a window of opportunity to at least voice. Um, I, when I, when I saw that it was approved, I was surprised that anybody would think that that belongs right downtown where our depot building is. And I agree with Mr. Knowles, and I had not read this email, but that is our iconic building. Now, with that said, could that piece of art go somewhere else? I think so. I think it could go right here on the town campus, and that's a great idea. And I think that's, it, this is a more modern building, even though it has throwbacks to a depot building in its architecture. It also bridges to the, to the current time. You know, this building's less than 20 years old. Um, it might belong on this campus or somewhere similar. Um, and it can be very interactive in a place like that. Uh, I like the idea of a downtown plan inclusion, uh, or even, uh, an element of art in the downtown plan. The interactivity part, that's a really great point. Um, I think there are probably some really good examples of art that are interactive and still fit our motif, if you'll pardon the term. I think also from a marketing and branding standpoint, Apex has gone out of its way to brand itself and to have a feel. And people talk about, "What does downtown Apex look like? What does it feel like? How, how does it make me feel when I'm downtown?" So this art needs to bring that out in you and not, not slap you in the face and say, "This is so stark and so different, it just rocks your world," right? That's not what downtown Apex is all about. Downtown Apex is comfort food. Downtown Apex is, you come down there and you just kinda sit and you just soak in it. It's like a hot tub, you know? It's that feeling. And I think art, the, whatever art we decide to put in the downtown, which is a very small area, needs to somehow feel like that. So if we can find a different place for this, okay. Um, but that's my, my, my view is, um, and, and last thing I'll say is, I like art, even if it's, even if it's odd, stark, provocative, asymmetrical, you know, turns your head sideways and go, "What's that all about?" I get that. I totally understand that. But, but that's art. And I think downtown is not supposed to be that, not Apex, anyway. You know, if we were starting this, if we were, if we were a new city just blowing up, um, you know, and with total urban skate, I get it. It would fit. But I think something, there's gotta be something more appropriate out there. And I think if, I agree with what you said, if we only got two submissions, we kinda keep looking. When I was hiring, multiple times I was hiring people and I only got four resumes, I didn't hire any of them cause I was waiting for someone better to come along. And sometimes it takes months to find that right person. You don't wanna hire the wrong person cause it's convenient. You wait for the right one. So I, I do encourage the council to find another location for this. Let the Public Art Committee think through it. I don't feel like there's a hurry. And I don't think anybody should feel like we gotta be in a hurry. So if we can find something else, let it fit within a, maybe a downtown plan, um, that kinda conveys the marketing, the feel, the comfort of downtown, that would be great. Thanks for giving me a, a couple of minutes there.
May I ask just one question of, of the town manager? Have we contracted for this piece of art yet?
We have not.
So the field is open.
Can I ask, for, to clarify, so you're, with the downtown plan connection, you want, you're looking for the downtown plan to possibly suggest a new location, or are you saying for that area, the downtown plan should think about art in that context?
I, I don't really wanna mic, micromanage the Public Art Committee. Um, but I think, feel like the input that I feel didn't happen could happen and be more robust due to downtown plan. So, you know, I'm not on the committee, but I know they're at Peak Fest and perhaps there are more people who will volunteer and perhaps there'll be more activity related to this. But I feel like the input for anything going downtown should run, or could run through the downtown plan and get more people excited about it.
Yeah, and I totally agree. And I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I totally agree. The downtown plan is supposed to be comprehensive for a reason.
So, and they want, and related to this piece and putting it somewhere else, that's gonna be something that they're gonna need to do. But it still needs to include robust public input.
Okay.
What is interactive art? That's...
Touch and feel.
I'm an art idiot.
Touch and feel.
Okay.
As opposed to a, an art gallery where you're not allowed to touch anything. Right, that's non-interactive.
A statue or something like that of J.C. Knowles would be. Interactive art.
I can't wait to see this. Yeah, I, I will throw something out there. I think the, that, uh, we need to figure this out this evening because the, um, Public Art Committee would need to figure out the grant. So they got a grant and I, because I, that's how my work is, but, but grants is that they gotta figure out, you know, what they can do related to that. And so they just need to have some direction for that.
Alright. Um, I'll call for the vote to, um, to send this to the Public Art Committee to find another location, but also to consider, uh, the downtown plan before, or at least maybe recommending that public art clauses be added to the downtown plan to capture the mood of what art fits downtown. And I think maybe that would be a really good way. I think that's kinda where we're going with that motion, if I could be allowed to paraphrase.
The word "local" should be in there somewhere.
Right, and I like the, we should think local. Um, so, uh, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Alright, so that will go to Public Art Committee. Um, Public Art Committee, if there are further questions, feel free to reach out. Um, I'm certain there will be people who will try to help convey that, but you got to hear the whole conversation. Alright?
There's the second part, right?
Is there, oh, the second part, okay. Go ahead.
So the second part is, um, looking back at our art policy. So, um, whenever I was looking at this, I had, um, I'd realized I didn't see public comment in regards to this and in the process. And that bothered me a lot and made me understand why I was receiving a lot of emails and, uh, phone calls and people walking up to me going, "What is this about? Tell me more about this," because it was just there. It, there was no lead-up to it where they could say they had some input somewhere along the process. So what I'd like to do is revisit the public art policy and look at things like, the call to artists, open for, you know, a minimum amount of days, having a minimum amount of submissions to it, whether that's three or whatever. And if you don't get three, then maybe the call to artists can be open, continue to stay open until you get those submissions. One particular phrasing that, um, that I like is, "The Art Committee shall submit artist submissions to the public via the town website and a display available for 30 to 60 days to receive public guidance. And then the committee shall take that public guidance under advisement." So it's not something where, you know, you have to do exactly, you know, what the public is saying, but public, the public input should be a, an important part of this. Um, and I feel like there was some disenfranchisement there happening. Um, so, lots.
Um, and I heard you reflect that as well, so, um, not to necessarily reiterate that, but I don't know if, is there anybody who would object to having the more public comment element added to the procedure or the process?
I'd just suggest make, you know, we put development signs up when we're...
Yeah.
New development, we should put artist coming or something signs up, because that way the people that actually go by will be involved.
Okay.
Now I'm sharing on social media and just help me out.
Right, I mean, my, my original thought is that having something on the town website and something either a display at either the Halle or the town, um, here, either at the community center or town hall, showing what the submissions are like, and then just having a simple rank of, "I like this one the best", you know, "This one's second, this one's third," and so on. That way, you know, you don't have to, you know, necessarily read through everybody's opinions on public art, but at least get what people feel like is the best. And then taking that under advisement. I mean, it may not be the top one that the public has decided, but, you know, top two or something like that, that people are saying, "Yes, I connect with this." This, this is something I'd like to see wherever it's meant to go.
Alright. Let me, um, let me refer or direct, uh, question to the town manager. I saw you writing a lot of notes there. Do you feel like, i- if we were to agree generally with adding more public process, and you've heard some examples of things, do you think you and staff could come up with a modified policy that includes more public comment in the methods that you think would be functional? So that we as a council don't have to come up with the functional method, we can just decide, "We'd like more public comment." And since staff will have to execute that anyway, would you like to take that on? And if we approve that, would you like to take that on, uh, with the staff to come up with a modified policy for, or recommendation?
Certainly. I, I did not get verbatim what Councilwoman Killingsworth said, but I made a note to get the wording from her.
Alright, and we've got the audio recording as well too, so we can play that back if we need to. Alright. I guess where I was going with that is, um, if there's no objection, um, I'd like for council just to turn this over to town manager with the input. Thank you very much for your comments, Councilwoman Killingsworth.
Thank you.
And Mayor Protem Dozier. Um, and I think having more opportunity for public input. I like the idea of maybe even a sign that goes where the public art's going to go, saying, "What, what would you like to see here?" Or would you, or maybe there's gonna be a workshop or charrette or whatever.
Yeah.
This is where town staff can come up with the right public participation, right?
Can I, can I, um, just, I'll, uh, you know, we have a, we have that committee now that is in place, can, I, I think, consulting with them would be a helpful, uh, thing in this process, cause they exist and they're, we're trying to empower them to, to recommend stuff to us. So hopefully it'll be a two-way street here with the, with that group.
Yes.
On this new, any changes we have in the policy.
Yes, it will be.
Okay, great.
Alright. So, um, is there any objection, or, or do we wanna formally have a motion and vote? I'll say, is there any objection to letting the town manager run with this and work with the Public Art Committee and staff? Alright, very good. Thank you very much for, for that discussion. And, uh, just to check, that concludes your...
Yes.
Our items? Okay, great.
Further on that item.
Alright, very good. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, uh, do you have any further questions before we move along?
No, sir.
Alright, very good. Uh, we'll now move on to new business, and, uh, this is the time where, um, we discuss things typically without discussion from the public, obviously. Thank you for, count, to council for, uh, allowing new business number four to be the first one that we'll, uh, bring up. I will say, uh, thank you to, um, Ms. Bernard and Mr. Wall, um, for the presentation. It is true, um, everything that she said, those are things that we've been doing behind the scenes. When I went to Houston, it, you know, and I'm careful with taxpayer money, I went to Houston primarily on a fund or a foundation of a grant, um, from a, a law firm, of all things, that has a philanthropic arm that wants to address human trafficking in Houston. But now that they've been doing this for almost three years, two and a half to three years, they then said, "Let's share what we've learned." And so they actually paid, and I had to apply, um, and qualify, and, um, being from a small town, I thought, or at least small-ish, right, I thought might disqualify me. Because I was there with Dallas and Austin and Los Angeles, and there's me there from Apex. But because we had had a proclamation and because the Reddix Podcast was created and launched and what Nicole said was very true, it kicked open doors that we couldn't have believed. And, um, and put meetings in Washington DC that were surprising. And so it does, it is probably putting us on the map faster than we even are aware. With all that said, um, there were several things I had to do because it was a grant. I first had to tell them what my action plan was, because someone else paid for my education. When that happened, um, I put together a, kind of a, I'd call it maybe a two-pronged approach. And prong one was, uh, supposed to be an easy success, or at least, you know, nothing's easy, right? When, when government's involved and elected officials involved. But an easy success would be to take the human trafficking aware or informed model that Houston put in place that said, "If this town or this city is going to hire you to do work for us," you, whatever company that is. So that would be landscaping or that would be paving roads or filling in potholes or fixing concrete somewhere, that you will not use trafficked labor. And for those of you who haven't quite fully gotten up to it, trafficked labor is essentially someone who's working, but when they get paid, then they end up having to pay their pay back to the person who gave them food, gave them clothes, and they basically never get out from that debt situation. And because oftentimes they don't speak English very well, they may not even really know exactly what state they're in or anybody around them other than their own little circle, and they get locked into this. So, um, not just our first line, but also their subcontractors. So they would have to commit and that they would do their due diligence to make sure there's no labor traffic there. The reason this is so important is because if we as a town want to go the next step, where our chief is getting involved in helping to address the multi, multiple facets of human trafficking, and where we start working with health organizations and those impoverished, and frankly, yes, those who are affluent and are buyers of trafficked sex, you know, this is a tough topic. But if there's anything that having a podcast has helped me with, is learn how to talk about a really tough topic. And to see that if we wanna be serious about making a change outside, we gotta make sure our house is good. And the way we make sure our house is good is to say to our town attorney, "Can you review all of our contracts to make sure that when we issue a contract out to a vendor, and they're gonna do work for us, that they're not gonna use trafficked labor? That they're not gonna use people who are indentured and can't get out of their debt?" Once our house is good, then we know that we're not gonna end up with a situation where such-and-such landscaping was just indicted for four counts of labor trafficking. And oh, by the way, Town of Apex is one of their customers, right? We want to avoid that, cause that will cut the legs out from any benefit that we might get in all the work that we do. So I said to, um, so Menal Davis is the, um, the mayor of Houston, Sylvester Turner. His top-line aide and her sole job, twenty-four, well, 24/7 I started to say, but, well, maybe. But that was to say, "What does this city need to do?" And one of the angles was to make sure their, inside the house is good before they really can fix the outside. And I said, "Can you share with me some examples of what that language looks like in your contracts?" And she said, "Absolutely." And she gave me a copy of it, and I've provided it to the town attorney so she can begin to vet it. And as you remember, a couple of years ago, one of the things that she did was to take all our disparate contracts from all the departments, kinda run them all through and find the common templates. So now we have some common templates. We actually have a great starting point to incorporate some of this kind of language. So, not to belabor the point, but this is really, really important. This is a big deal. And I think it's awesome to see that, um, we are at the tip of the spear for this. I believe that once we do this, we will be able to say, "Let's share this, this with Cary, with Morrisville, with Holly Springs, with Garner, with Fuquay Varina, and then it'll go to Raleigh and then Greensboro and Durham. And next thing you know, we'll have 100 counties and 535 municipalities all adopting this same thing." It costs very little for us to make that change and for us to then now hold our vendors accountable. Now that sets the stage for us to be able to say, "Now, chief, let me, what can you do? What do you need to combat internet crimes against children? Because our house is good." So that's why this is so important. And I appreciate everybody seriously considering of this. And I, I anticipate, uh, a positive vote. Thank you very much. Um, I'll ask if there's a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
Thank you. Discussion on the motion?
I'd like to ask a question. Um, how, and this is my ignorance on this subject, but how do you know that X company we hire is using or not using trafficked labor? Like, is there, I, I don't, again, it's my ignorance in the subject. Like, is there, again, it's my ignorance in the subject, but...
Sure. Well, the town attorney may want to speak a little further to that, but the high level is, you put a language in front of them that makes them assert that they're not. That's the first step. Second, that they're not subcontracting to anyone who is, and that they turn around and hold that same standard to their subs. So we would say to them, you're agreeing to this, that means you also, if you're going to sub out to somebody, so if you're going to go get ABC's lawn mowing, and that's part of your overall landscaping package, then you have to say to ABC, you guys need to commit to me that you're not using labor traffic. You may not be able to totally prevent, but what you certainly can do from a legal liability standpoint, is you'll be able to say, we did everything we could. We did our due diligence to make sure that that wasn't happening. And if it did happen, it was a bad act on their part and not negligence on ours.
Okay. One other question. So this was about a year ago, you made a proclamation? Was that kind of what started all this?
So a year and a half ago, we did a proclamation. And so as Nicole Bernard mentioned, she and Whitney Ludlow came to me. I didn't know either one of them at the time. They met me through a common adult, and, sorry, adult, but I should say, someone my age, right? Not millennial age, much younger. But, I'm sorry how that came out, that was a glib, and that's not how it was intended.
Most of us millennials are now adults.
Yes, no, I know, that's what I was trying not, that's not what I meant. All right. So what I meant was, someone my age reached out to me and said, I know some ladies who would like to ask you, what can we do about human trafficking? And I said, okay, I don't know much about it, but I'm happy to have a coffee. And I learned real fast what I could learn in an hour and a half. I also found that the chief was already a bit plugged into this topic. We also had our victim's advocate, who is also in the police department, was there as part of that. And so I realized that there's a groundswell of something happening. And I said, okay, well, as a mayor, I can do proclamations, but I don't just do proclamations for a piece of paper. So what are we going to do? And I challenged Nicole and Whitney to come up with a program. I said, if we're going to do something, you're going to need to show me that you're going to be making people aware, not just a piece of paper that we can post or pin up or somewhere. And so they came up with a program. So I said, okay. So we did several days, Monday, Tuesday, well, we kicked it off on a Sunday. Then Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, there was something going on to help educate people. And people came, citizens came to different events, and they learned more about it. And we did it again last year in October, so one year later. And, you know, I'm hoping that we'll do it again this year.
So that's phenomenal. This is a great example of your proclamation and the organization taking it to the next level. So awesome job. And not just the flavor of the week or the flavor of the month wanting a piece of paper. So this is phenomenal. So, great job.
Right. And the nonprofit organization happened after the proclamation was what I would call successful. And it was like, wow, how do we now spread this around? And what's your scope? And so that's why Shield North Carolina. Which is also why I realized that we can create a prototype model here, and actually, Houston's kind of done a lot of the heavy lifting for us, but not in North Carolina. So we can start this here and explode that out. And I think, you know, once we did this, this is just our internal contract, after that, I mean, we've already had conversations preliminary with the town manager about how do we help staff members in the town of Apex become HT-aware? And how does being HT-informed or HT-aware impact your job? So what is your job? If you collect checks from citizens who are paying the bills, can you recognize a trafficked 15-year-old, you know, with a 30-year-old man paying his electric bill? Can you recognize it, or do you just don't notice it at all? And that's where the information, that's where being educated and informed can help, because then that person can then contact presumably someone in the police department and say, I know we're all, we have now a town plan. Right, this is what I think is coming next after this tonight. And then we have opportunities for tips to be provided by town employees. What if a fire marshal goes into a place of business and has to do an inspection? Does he know the signs so that he can say to the chief, guess what I saw? You tell me what it is, but this is what I saw, right? Now he's got a tip to work off of. And if there's anything I learned from Carl Wall of the SBI and Chief Letney, is tips drive those kind of things. So once you've got a tip from a citizen who knows what to see, but they may not know what it is, but they know it looks odd, then they can start to stake it out, they can start to follow it, and they can watch. And that's how we shut down Touch of Asia two and a half years ago, because of a tip, because something looked odd. Why are 12 what appear to be Chinese women getting out of a van and going into the same apartment and sleeping on mattresses on the floor? That's weird. That's odd. Right? And that is the kind of thing where we said, oh, they're being trafficked for sex at a massage parlor that's illegal but pretending to be legal. And those are the kind of things that can be found. So that's where I think we're going, and this is just the first step. And I'm excited that we, as a town of Apex, get to be right there on the tip of that spear.
Can I ask you about Houston, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So you said they had this policy in place, so how, did they talk about how it played out? Like, was it a, do you, are they breaching the contract if there's a tip of this happening? Or do they have to go all the way to like being indicted and then convicted of this crime to be in breach of the contract?
So from the legal standpoint, she didn't, so I say she, meaning Menal Davis, the lady who kind of driving this for Mayor Turner in Houston. She didn't really talk about how to follow up or follow through when you have a bad situation. But I would imagine, first of all, that our town attorney would be able to come up with probable scenarios. But even bigger than that is, everybody down there in Houston has said, if y'all have questions, call. So I could give our town attorney two phone numbers that she can call that will give her two supplemental kinds of help in being able to answer, how do you enforce if there is a failure? Now, if it's a legal problem, it may be something we would ask the chief, is this go to the county? Is this, where's the, you know, what's the jurisdiction for this? Maybe it goes to the state level, and it has to go around that direction first, but at least, you know, we can, if we're the ones pointing it out, then we're also the least liable, most likely, right? But I don't know exactly the process, and I don't know the degree to which they found failures or non-compliances after they've had contracts signed. But I can find out and talk to you about it later if you'd like to know.
One question, do they have people not decide to sign contracts because they didn't want to sign the pledge?
It was not communicated to me that anyone refused to sign that contract. I think there may have been some people that may have no bid, once they read the contract, because they, well, I'm speculating now, so I'll probably refrain from doing further. But I can imagine if I were knowingly trafficking labor and realized that I was about to sign a contract with a city that was keenly aware, and they pointed that out in their contract, I might think twice about bidding on that job, go to a nearby town that's clueless on the topic. Yeah.
I guess if we caught them doing what, trafficking, then our recourse is to pull the contract?
I think there would be some legal recourse that we could certainly do for, at the very least level would be non-compliance to the contract, and we would rebid it out or something similar.
It would technically be a breach of contract.
Right.
Yeah, we could terminate typically for breach of contract.
Right. And at most, we could actually initiate...
...with, depending on the contract, there could be damages associated with that, which would likely require further legal action to be able to...
Yeah.
...but it certainly stayed in contract if we found out that they were a breach.
Yeah. And at most, we could actually help law enforcement prosecute.
Yes.
So, I think you made a motion.
Yes.
And there was a second. So if there's no other discussion or questions, I'll call for the vote.
Aye.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, thank you. That passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank, yep. And I'd like to thank also those who came, Project No Rest and Project Fight, did I get it right? Thank you all for coming out and supporting this. Please pass the word that now that we've done this, we're welcome, welcome anybody from another town or county who wants to ask, what did y'all do and how do we do it? All right, thank you.
Mayor, can we take a moment?
Yes, and Russell, while you're getting your slides, we're going to take a short recess. And just for the record, I'm also going to pass the gavel so I can go visit my parents. Thank you.